Session to order. And hi, Mrs. Belt. We have a quorum. 1.3 Introduce the interpreter. Gus Moria will serve as Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees would like to listen to Spanish interpretation of the meeting. Please pick up the headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Mora servirá como intérprete del español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español. De ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you very much. Meeting announcements. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form, located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Board Manager Delia Smart before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use a microphone on the stand located in front of the room. I would like to now entertain a motion to move 1.5 and 1.6 after 3.8 on the agenda.
All motion.
Second.
On a motion by Board Clerk Gabey, second by Board Member Naylor, all in favor.
Motion passes. Six zero with one absent.
Public recognition. Board member service.
Thank you, Board President Gomoyan, board members. It is my pleasure to provide this recognition for two of our outstanding board members who this past year have served in both our president and clerk role. And as everyone here knows, their responsibility is to help keep our board focused, to help run meetings, to meet with the superintendent, also to keep him focused, all of those things to keep the direction of the district moving forward. It's a very important role. And I can say with absolute certainty that both President Gomoyan and Clerk Gabey have fulfilled their roles with distinction and honor. And it's been a pleasure as the superintendent to work for each of you. And so at this time, I'd like to start with Board Clerk Jackie Gabey. If you would come down, we'd like to present a token of our appreciation for your service as clerk this year.
We're going to have you stand awkwardly in the middle. Would you like to say anything? Would you like to? You're good. Okay.
And while all roles are important, perhaps one of the most important and visible is that, of course, of the board president. And they are the spokesperson for the board, they meet with the superintendent along with the clerk, and other board members help set the agenda. And also, you know, again, in this time, Walter Gomoyan has served with distinction in this role of president. And also, it is this board that received, obviously, the coveted CSBA School Governance Award of the Year. And that does not just happen by circumstance, that happens because of leadership. And so at this time, I'd like to recognize President Gomoyan for your service this year.
Say a few words, and then we'll come out and we'll do a photo.
Well, I just want to say thank you. This board is amazing. It's been an honor to serve as board president. Thank you, staff. And I told Kirk, just because I'm not board president doesn't mean I'm not calling you all the time. So just be prepared for that. And yeah, just thank you. It has been so fun and such an honor to serve. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item three, the organizational meeting. Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, President Gomoyan and board. Education Code requires an annual organizational meeting for school boards. This organizational meeting includes the election of board officers, president, clerk for the calendar year, and per our board bylaw, the appointment of the superintendent as the secretary. The board officer election process is held in public so that the public can witness the event, but the public does not participate in the process. We will begin with the election of the board president. I will soon, 3.1, election of board president by board bylaw 9121. So I will soon open the floor for board members for discussion of those interested in being board president for the coming year 2024. The board president provides leadership on behalf of the board and the community it serves. Duties include presiding over meetings, signing all instruments, acts, and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the board, representing the district as the governance spokesperson in conjunction with the superintendent. The president has the same rights, including the right to move, second, discuss, and vote as other board members. The discussion for board members interested in becoming president allows the board to know who might be interested in serving as president. Board members may nominate other members or may nominate themselves. Once the discussion is completed, I will close the floor to discussion and open for a motion to nominate a board member, just a couple of parliamentary procedures with it. The motion must be seconded. If it is, I'll call for the vote. If a majority of the board agrees, then we have a president. If we do not have a majority, the result is a non-election, I'll open the floor for another motion. And also, if a motion is not seconded, then it dies for lack of a second, and then we open the floor to another motion. When the new president is elected, that person will preside over the meeting from their current seat. And just as everyone knows, during our closed session time, based on the officers, we will reconfigure the dais for the new president clerk, and then board members in alphabetical order as we traditionally have done. So I'll now open the floor for discussion among board members interested in serving the office of board president for 2024. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to throw a name out there, I'm hoping this person wants to be president, but Jackie Gabey, only because I look at your background in education and you've served as clerk, so you've got all the requirements, I think, to run a good meeting. And so I really would like to see you be president.
Thank you. And while I don't know about following Walter, but I am interested.
Do we have any other discussion?
I will second that motion, and I also want to thank Board President Walter Gomoyan for all of her service this year.
Any other discussion? All right. This time, I'll close the floor for discussion and open the floor for nominations for board president.
Okay. Go ahead. So I want to-
I see Joy Naylor. Yes.
I'll move to elect Jackie Gabey as our new board president for this coming year.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Naylor for Jackie Gabey. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second by President Gomoyan. I think at this point, I now call for the vote, so all those in favor, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Congratulations.
Now, Walter, you just kick me when I say something wrong, and we're all good. All right. Election of board clerk per board, or item 3.2, election of board clerk per board bylaw 9123. We will follow the same process used to elect the board president to now elect the board clerk. Duties of the board clerk include certify or attest to actions taken by the board when required, maintain records and reports as required by law, sign minutes of board meetings following their approval, sign documents on behalf of the district as directed by the board, serve as presiding officer at discretion or in the absence of the president, perform any other appropriate duties assigned by the board. I will open the floor for board members for discussion of those interested in being board clerk for the coming year 2024. This allows the entire board to know who may be interested in serving as board clerk. Board members may nominate other members or may nominate themselves. Reminder, we will ensure that board members are seated at the dais in proper order when we return from today's closed session. Like to now open the floor for discussion. Would anyone like to nominate a board member or themselves for board clerk?
Madam President? I'd like to nominate Joy Naylor for clerk for this board. Mrs. Naylor has a long experience in working with children, longtime teacher and school administrator. She is one of the senior members on this board, is organized, and I think is well-suited for the position of clerk.
Thank you, Board Member Odo. I would love to serve as the clerk.
I was just going to say, I'm pleasantly surprised, Joy. I think that, I thought maybe you were like me and working a full-time job, and it's a little hard to imagine doing, you know, a little bit more. But I agree, I think that would be a wonderful choice. I think you've been on the board now for five years. That makes me very happy.
I will agree.
I also want to express my interest in potentially serving as clerk, and I also wanted to sort of, and please come me off if this is the wrong time for this, but in speaking to many colleagues at the California School Board Association Conference, I noticed that many other school districts have a vice president on the board that allows a kind of more equitable distribution of labor, that allows the vice president to fill in when the president is absent from their duties or is unable to attend events, et cetera. And so I also wanted to bring that up as a possible point of discussion for the future amendment to board policies, if that's of interest to the rest of the board.
I think that would be a good thing to discuss in the future. We do only have two executive positions, and because we are a large board, I think a lot of other boards, in fact, only have five members, and some of them even have more positions, and we're seven. So that is an interesting thing. And Randy, I also think you would be a good clerk. So wow, that's tough.
Yeah, just a quick comment, I think, and looking at Megan, if you don't mind, but I do think that does require a policy change, and of course, the board can decide that they would like to review that policy, in which case we could bring it forward for discussion and amendment at a future meeting.
Yeah, that's correct. And from a timing perspective, if the board did make a policy change in the next year, then that would come back next year at this organizational meeting, which is mandated by statute to be this week.
Okay, any more nominations? If not, I'll close the discussion and call for a motion to elect the board clerk.
Moved. Go ahead. I would like to nominate Joy Naylor as board clerk.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Gomoyan, second by Odo, and vote. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Honored to serve with you, Joy.
Same here.
Item 3.3, appointment of secretary to the board per board bylaw 9122. Per board bylaw 9122, the board must now take action to appoint the superintendent to serve as secretary to the board. The secretary to the board shall be responsible for maintaining an accurate and complete record of all board proceedings and shall prepare, distribute, and maintain the board agenda, record, distribute, and maintain the board minutes, maintain board records and documents, conduct official correspondence for the board as directed by the board, sign and execute official papers, perform other duties as assigned by the board. Can I call for a motion for the appointment of the superintendent as secretary to the board?
I will motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by trustee Casebeers Saleno, went blank, and second by trustee Vegas, I have a vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 3.4, selection of board representatives to vote in the 2024 election of county committee members. Superintendent Shrum.
All right, so trustee Naylor is our current representative here. This is, once a year, I believe, this individual completes a ballot to vote for county committee member. So not very time-consuming on this one, but so do we have a volunteer, a board member who would be interested in serving as the board representative vote in the 2024 election of county committee members?
I'd like to nominate Randy Vegas.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you for your nomination, and I would accept if that is the will of the board.
Okay.
Yeah, call for the vote.
So I'll call for, or motion by Casebeers Saleno, and second by Gomoyan. I'll call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item 3.5, CSBA delegate assembly nomination. Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you. This is to serve as our CSBA delegate assembly nomination. Again, this has to go forward and be approved, I believe, by other school boards to complete the process. Walter Gomoyan has asked to be nominated and recommended to serve as our representative CSA, or to move forward in that process and to be placed on the ballot. So this is the board approving trustee Gomoyan to serve and be placed on the ballot, so hopefully serve as the delegate assembly for the CSBA for this, I think, region. So.
May I have a motion to approve the CSBA delegate assembly nomination for Walter Gomoyan?
So moved.
I'll second.
On a motion by trustee Odo, and a second by Belt. I'll call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I did a lot of campaigning in San Francisco.
I was just going to say, she will be fabulous at this, and much better than me. Okay. Item 3.6, Visele Unified School District Board Representative Committee appointments for 2024. Superintendent Shrum.
I believe everyone has completed the assignment list, and that is listed or shared there in front of you. So at this time, unless there are any board members who want to make any changes to this list, then I would turn it back over to Board President Gabey to move the motion forward.
Can I ask a question? On the open slots, so would we call Delia and Monica and say, hey, I'd like to go? Okay. Okay.
Yes, and I just wanted to say on that, too, that the reason my name is not on these is because due to my work schedule and being moved to Porterville, it's been making it pretty difficult for me to make some of these times. And so actually, Delia had the bright idea that, hey, there's some open slots, so that might give more flexibility to you instead of just kind of cornering you in. So also, in case anyone was wondering, I was not missed. That was purposeful.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the VUSD Board Representative Committee appoints for 2024?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. On a motion by trustee Vegas, and a second by Casebeers Saleno, I'll call for a vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 3.7, approve board of education meeting dates for the 2024-2025 school year. Superintendent Shrum.
Thank you, board members. As you know, we have the calendar. I think it was available in your packet. We have double, triple, quadruple-checked the dates, made some adjustments, and think that the dates that we have are best with our school calendar. We've made sure they don't conflict with any holidays or potential breaks or anything along those lines. And, you know, you'll notice that in the next summer, the budget is within the same week, and we've spoken with Nathan, and that's pretty typical. You'll see a lot of districts do that. It does still need ed code, no need to stretch that out in the summer when people are looking forward to having a little bit of time. So that is our recommended calendar for the board meeting dates for the 2024-25 board calendar year.
May I have a motion to approve the list of board meeting dates for the 2024-25 school year?
Moved to approve.
Second.
On a motion by Odo, and a second by Gomoyan, I'll call for a vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 3.8, approval of authorized signatures for the calendar year 2024. Superintendent Shrum.
All right, obviously, last item here, well, not last item, but of the organizational meeting. Those names are also in your packet. That is the authorized signatures, president, new clerk, secretary. And so this is approving those individuals to be the authorized signers for the calendar year 2024.
May I have a motion to approve the authorized signatures for the calendar year 2024?
So moved.
I'll second.
On a motion by Gomoyan, a second by Casebeers Saleno.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we're going to move back to item 1.5, which was identify closed session topics of discussion. Now I will find my closed session. Closed session items are 5.1, recommended expulsions, 5.2, recommended reinstatements, 5.3, public employee assignment, reassignment, and appointment, 5.4, public employee discipline, dismissal, release, and complaints, 5.5, conference with labor negotiator, and 5.6, anticipated litigation. Item 1.6, public comment on closed session topics. General public comment on any closed session items will be heard at this time pursuant to board policy. The board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. Do we have any public comment? Seeing none. I will go to item 2.2. Nope. I will adjourn to closed session. I'd like to start by turning it over to Superintendent Shrum.
All right, well, good evening. I would like to recognize earlier this evening at our organizational meeting, we have a new board president. Like to welcome President Gabey as our new board president for VUSD, and our new clerk, Joy Naylor, for our leadership. So congratulations to both of these individuals, and thank you to outgoing President Gomoyan and Clerk Gabey for your service.
Yes, and I do want to thank Board Member Gomoyan. She served fabulously as president, and I know she has an extra gavel over there. So anytime, you just get me back in line when I mess it up. Okay. I'd also like to welcome our new student board representative, Camille Salmeron, from Mount Whitney High School. And item 6.2, interpreter Gus Moore will serve as the Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of this meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Gus Mora servirá como intérprete del español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación en español. De ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
Thank you. 6.3, meeting announcement. This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Members of the public wanting to provide public comment on items listed on tonight's agenda, we recommend you fill out the public comment form, the green form, located on the table in the back of the room. Please hand the completed form to Delia Smart, board manager, before the item comes up on the agenda. We recommend you complete a separate form for each agenda item you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table in the back of the meeting room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in the front of the room. Now I'll call the Pledge of Allegiance by Board Member Todd Odo.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and everlasting.
Item 6.5, report action taken in closed session. There was no action taken in closed session. Item 6.6, revision to enclosure items and the adoption of the board meeting agenda. There are revised item enclosures, number 3.5, 10.1, 10.2, 12.8, and 12.11. We need to revise the agenda and remove consent. Agenda item 12.6, data sharing agreement between Going Merry Incorporated and Visele Unified School District for college scholarships. May I have a motion to adopt the revised board meeting agenda?
A motion.
Second.
On a motion by Casebeers Saleno, and a second by Gomoyan.
Student rep votes yes, and passes unanimously.
Item 6.7, student performance, the Golden West High School chamber singers. Assistant Superintendent of Learning and Leadership, Mark Thompson.
Good evening, board. If you would, let's take a moment right now, let's reconfigure. If you guys would like to, come on down, and I will introduce our group in just a moment. Mr. Luna, if they are ready, they can come set up, and then I'll introduce them after they're in here. So this evening, we're in for a treat. The Golden West High School choir program under the direction of Paul Ray Hub has a long tradition of choral excellence. This ensemble is comprised of select sophomores, juniors, and seniors from the school's choral program. The group consistently receives top superior ratings at choral festivals throughout California. The ensemble has been featured performers at the California State and Western Division Music Education Conferences. Most recently, the ensemble was honored to perform before the Fresno State Exceptional Educational Practice Conference last November, and tonight they will be performing two musical selections. One is Tomorrow Shall Be My Dancing Day and Frosty the Snowman. So at this time, would you help me welcome our Golden West choir?
Tomorrow Shall Be My Dancing Day is an English carol welcoming the baby. It features our wonderful accompanists, Diana and- It features our wonderful accomplices, Diana Muntz.
It's a feeling that I was so very poor, it was my chance, each was exciting and us and us in before us to all my true love to my dancing for my love. I hope my love, my love is how I am for my true love.
Bases are switching sides. That's our choreography for this evening.
Let's give them one more hand as the board comes back up. Thank you guys so much. That was quite a treat.
Okay, item 7.1, public recognition. Recognition of the Visel Unified School District Board of Education, CSBA Board Governance Team of the Year. Superintendent Trump.
All right. Well, I come carrying some hardware, as I think that's the right term, right? When you win something. Thank you, President Gabi, and board members and our public and invited guests. Obviously, this is an incredible recognition and evening, and I have certainly have a few words to say, but I want to start with a short video from CSBA that tells a little bit about this recognition.
The significance of the governance team award is really twofold. Firstly, we want to recognize excellence at the local level when it comes to policy and practice of running a school district. But we also want to set an example for local governing boards throughout the state, in school districts and county offices of education, to replicate, to take those practices and bring them home to their local district so they can do an even better job of strengthening public schools and supporting improved student outcomes. We considered school districts of every type from all across California. We looked at county offices of education as well, but we felt confident that Viselia USD was just a stellar example and more than a worthy award winner. So we are very proud and happy to recognize Viselia USD as CSBA's 2023 Governance Team of the Year Award Winner.
And I do understand there was a slight tutorial on that, but unfortunately, it didn't stick on pronunciation. But but that's okay, you know, can't let that get in the way of the content. And I think most people here recognize, and we have many district leaders, board members here as well, who have who have all served this district with distinction, that this board has been on a journey. And what this means is, you know, a unified governance team doesn't mean that we always agree with each other, right? Or that there's always a 7-0 vote. Now, those are nice, but doesn't always happen, right? But what it means is, this is a board of education that models civility, that models respect, that models that they can have conversation of agreement or disagreement, but do so in a productive way. And I think we could all agree that that those lessons in civics are badly needed in many places. And so it's an amazing honor to be able to work as the superintendent for this board. There are over 1,000 school districts and boards in the state of California, and out of all of them, this board of education was selected as the CSBA School Governance Team of the Year. Let's give them a big round of applause. I know I am proud of this board, and I am confident that not only is our school system and our district proud of this board, but our community, and they now serve as a model for school boards, not only across the state, but also across the nation as well. So we're going to take a quick photo with them, and then we're going to, well, I'll turn it back over to President Gabi to adjourn us into a short reception where I hope that you all take a few moments just to recognize and appreciate this board. It is not easy to be a public leader, a public servant, an elected official. And so each one of these individuals stood up and said, I want to serve this community. And again, they have done so with distinction. So it's an incredible honor, and I look forward to celebrating them tonight.
Before we convene for our recess, I do just want to say how I know we are all so proud of this honor and proud to serve Viselia. And I want to recognize, I know there's also former board members out in the audience, and all of that contributed to this. It's not just a one-year recognition. It's been a process. And I'll also turn it over to, well, I was going to say President Gamoyen, but she was our president when we won this award. So.
Yeah, and I just want to say I am incredibly proud of this board. And the journey began before this board was together. And I just want to thank a few people, Superintendent, our former Superintendent Cardoza. Our former board president, Juan Guerrero. And our board, one of our great board members, Catalina Blair. And these, these people together, we turned the corner with them, and then we were able to hire our amazing Superintendent, Mr. Schrum. So thank you.
With that, we'll now take a 15-minute recess and reconvene at, what is that, 6:03? I didn't know there was math involved. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. And item 10.1, focus on student learning, item 10.1, spotlight on VUSD Community Partner, Neighborhood Church. Superintendent Trump.
All right. Thank you, President Gabi, board members, and our our public and our guests. Excited tonight to have a special spotlight on our community partner, Neighborhood Church. And I want to begin with just reorienting everyone. If you take a look at our foundation, our core beliefs, our commitments, what we're committed to doing, and our commitment to student learning, you see two pieces underneath the beliefs and commitment. Family and community engagement is key to success, and learning environment should be supportive, safe, and innovative. And tonight, as we recognize Neighborhood Church, they helped us fulfill two of these core beliefs and commitments. Now, you know, we are blessed in Viselia to have many partners, to have many people who are willing to step up and help our students, community organizations, families, you name it. This is an amazing community that excels at supporting our youth and our students. But what differentiates Neighborhood Church is just how involved they are in supporting our school system and our students. And while we're here tonight to talk about a specific example, Neighborhood Church has been a longtime partner of Visel Unified, a strong partner of our Houston Elementary School, serving that community. And in this situation, for those that may not be aware, we had a situation at one of our elementary schools, Hurley Elementary, where we needed to relocate some classes. And, you know, we were in San Diego, San Francisco, I don't know why I keep saying, maybe I wanted to go to San Diego, but we went to San Francisco instead. And at our CSBA, and, you know, we started to receive the information of what was going on. And one of our executive cabinet members, you know, we were starting to think about, well, what do we do? You know, we need to relocate some classes, space is limited on campus, you know, we got to do this like in five minutes, right? What do we do? And so we called, called Neighborhood Church, our partner, and without hesitation, they said, what can we do? And that's the sign of a true partnership. And so tonight, we want to recognize Neighborhood Church for not only what you have done for the students and families in Visel Unified, but what you continue to do to model that spirit of support, that spirit of one Viselia connected, and and just reaching out and helping us do everything we could in this moment to help keep our kids in a safe environment, help support our teachers. And you didn't just open your doors to let folks come in. You know, you you helped welcome people. You've made sure the teachers filled well felt welcome in that environment. You went above and beyond just opening a door. And so on behalf of the Board of Education, our Hurley Community Principal Montoya, we just want to simply say thank you so much for being a partner and what you did to help our students and our families. And we'd like to present you with this certificate of appreciation that is presented to Neighborhood Church by the Viselia Unified School District Board of Education on this 12th day of December in appreciation for your invaluable assistance, contributions, and support of Hurley Elementary School students, parents, and staff. And we'd like to recognize, if you would come up, joining us tonight, we have Senior Pastor Forrest Jennings, Pastor Kelly Thomas, and Pastor Stephanie Benton. So if you would, please come up. We'd like to recognize you.
Okay, item 10.2, spotlight on good things happening in the district. Superintendent Trump.
Thank you, Board President Gabi, and board members and our community. Pleased tonight to present our spotlight. And again, thank you to our Neighborhood Church partners. Certainly, again, a spotlight of people willing to do anything and everything to help make sure our students and our teachers are taken care of and supported. And of course, everything anchors back to our foundation, our beliefs and commitments. And so you'll see that in all of the things that we're going to recognize and spotlight tonight. So as we get into the spotlight, obviously, we're about to, we just came from a holiday, and we're about to move into another holiday and winter break. And so that spirit of giving back is alive and well in Viselia. Like to spotlight, Sequoia High School hosted a food food distribution and Thanksgiving feast on back-to-back days for our VUSD families. Incredible to see the kindness of everyone there. Over Thanksgiving break, Goshen Elementary staff had food donations from Pipeline Church, and community members distributed 750 individual meals to Goshen families in need. These events showcase just exactly how our schools and partners impact the lives of people in our community. I had the opportunity this weekend to see this in action. Another amazing partner that we have are our Viselia Police Department PAL Program, Police Athletic League, incredible partner in VUSD. Two separate events to highlight. A few weeks ago, they hosted a Pancakes with Santa event at Houston Elementary, gave away and also then gave away 350 coats to students at Willow Glen during their annual event. We were able to bus students from all different parts of the of the district. And so the Coats for Kids events, elementary students transported to Willow Glen to receive the coats. They had lunch, and also Santa made an appearance. So very important there. And we want to extend our sincere appreciation to the Viselia Police Athletic League for your continued support of our students. Native American Heritage Month. In honor of Native American Heritage Month, our American Indian Program staff celebrated Indigenous voices and highlighted various local tribes through dance, song, and cultural presentations. Several board members along with myself had a chance to attend this event, and it was great to listen to the students talk about the pride they had in their history and also be able to share that as something to be celebrated and to be recognized. Also had many community partners, universities, and others along. About 200 people attended this amazing event, and thank you to Sequoia High School for hosting that. Also, it was a busy weekend. Had a chance to see some of our continued, our expanded learning opportunity program in action. Now, you may remember not too long ago, we had our very first district-wide elementary school soccer tournament. And so our programs with ELOP, which is Extended Learning Opportunity Program, a very important funding source, worth advocating for, if I may say so, to provide these opportunities for our students. And so every elementary school is participating in basketball now and had a chance to stop by Saturday and see some of them participating. The tournament is coming up on Saturday, I believe it is, at Ridgeview Middle School. And so thank you to ELOP and our program for providing these opportunities for our students. Visual and performing arts. Obviously, we just heard Golden West, and a couple of us were at a school site the other day and had the opportunity to hear them. They were at one of our elementary schools. They were at Pinkham. And they had been traveling to all of the elementary feeder programs. And what is so cool about that is our elementary students can see, and they they were joined by Valley Oak Middle School, they can see middle school and high school students doing these things, and they can see what they might want to aspire to. And so the chorus and music teachers were talking to all the students. They were talking to all the sixth grade in attendance and saying like, hey, when you come next year, these are things that you can do. They even had the kids raise their hand if they participated in sports, if they participated in other clubs, and almost every student raised their hand. So again, the kids could see, hey, you can come to middle school, you can go on to high school, and you can be involved, connected, and participate in any number of things. And so got a little off subject there, but that was really important. But visual and performing arts, many of our schools are having their winter concerts this time of year, choir, dance, drama orchestra, soloist, hundreds of students. So really proud of them. Four Creeks Elementary Drama Club had annual performance at the Rotary Theater. And lastly, Redwood Big Band and Jazz Combo performed at the Fresno State Jazz Band Festival. Both groups received straight superiors. At the event, saxophone player Kiani Estevas and Morales earned the Outstanding Soloist Award and a $500 scholarship. Also, many of our elementary schools have different holiday and winter events this week as well. Another very fun event was participating in Viselia's Candy Cane Lane Parade. This is an annual event. It's huge. I'm happy to say, oh, did I, we went way too forward there. Let's go. Can you get me back to Candy Cane? All right, we'll we'll have Chuck help us navigate there. I might have, not sure what happened there. So we had, get this, over 25 VUSD floats in the parade. I'm pretty confident we probably had the most. And that was many of our bands, LD Monte, Golden West, Mount Whitney, Redwood, Divisadero, La Jolla, Ridgeview, Crowley, Oak Grove, the transportation team, Valley Oak Middle School, VTEC, all of our VUSD mascots and principals were on a float as well, and and the VUSD board in the bus. And so just what a great way to celebrate VUSD, showcase to the community. Many, apparently, rock, paper, scissors was popular to play along the trail, and so all the kids. And so all the kids wanted to, people marching, engage in that. And congratulations to VTech who won third place in the Holiday Spirit Award. So just what phenomenal participation. And thank you to all of our teachers or staff and families that supported that event. We look forward to making a repeat appearance next year. And work on winning an award because that's, you know, we'll work on that. Highlighting our sports, obviously, all of, you know, great accomplishments amongst our students. Redwood Rangers volleyball won Division III California Southern Regional Championships and advanced to the state championship on November 18th. And LD Monte, you may have seen this young man in papers and other places. LD Monte Cross Country Runner Devon Habera is a CIF, which is California Interscholastic Federation, Central Section Division Two Champion. He finished third at the state championships, ran at the Foot Locker's Regional on November 25th, finished fourth and qualified for the rest region, West Regional Team at the National Championships on December 9th and finished 33rd, 35th. So that's out of the entire nation. What an incredible accomplishment. Congratulations to Devon. And while the athletic accomplishments are certainly very important, so are the academics. And we've talked a lot about one Visalia connected. And we know that students who are connected to a sport, to an activity that are involved in school have better grades, have better attendance and feel better about themselves. And so I want to give a shout out to our Central Section Team Academic Award winners. We have girls tennis. This is based on GPA, Golden West and LD Monte. You see their ranked places there, girls golf at LD Monte, boys cross country at Redwood and then football at Redwood and Golden West. So truly, when we talk about scholar athletes, these individuals and these teams are true scholar athletes. Congratulations to them. Also continuing our student success, last month, Golden West Virtual Enterprise International Club traveled to University of California, San Diego to compete against 60 other firms from various states for a chance to win $15,000. So these are students that are in this club and in this program, right? They come up with businesses and, and promote that. So not only did the Golden West team compete, but they won one of the prizes. The firm's $15,000 will go toward funding their business called Remedy. Remedy is a platform that allows people to track their medication and stores all important medical appointments in one location, allowing families to stay informed of aging family members to better support them. So what a great job to the Golden West Virtual Enterprise Team. What an amazing accomplishment. Continuing our accomplishments and again, we see another, the continuing impact of the Extended Learning Opportunity Program on creating opportunities for our students. And so this year, our ELOP team offered a Lego After School Program for all schools. Over 30 schools competed in the Central Valley Alliance Qualifier with Crowley and Linwood advancing to the Central California Championships. Among all of the Central Valley schools present, I'm proud to share Crowley scored third on robot design. Thank you to all of our schools, students and teachers for supporting these great events. Continuing also another event this weekend, also program in our school is called Health Force, also offered by ELOP that provides an after-school program to promote health education and future health careers at elementary schools. So this weekend, these students that are in the club came together and competed in a competition where they had to demonstrate their skills, their knowledge. You see there, they want top doc award was presented by Health Force Program to a student who shows great potential. Ms. Evelyn Angelies from Four Creeks was given this award. Students were scored on a variety of skills and categories and Crowley Elementary won the grand prize award. Houston came in first, Annie R. Mitchell came in second, Golden Oak came in third. Additionally, Linwood Most Professional Team, Viva Blunt Best Teamwork and Cottonwood Creek Elementary Most Spirited. And perhaps what's most impactful about this is a story was shared with me by our ELOP Director who said that she had a parent share with her, something about this program has unlocked something in my student who before was not engaged in some of these things, but now because of this club has seen a future for herself that maybe she didn't know was even possible. And that's exactly why these programs are important. So thank you to all of our, our teachers and our support staff that support these amazing programs. And thank you to Mount Whitney for hosting that event. Spotlight on our students, this week VTech High School senior was recognized through KSEE 24's Character Matters Program. He is known as Mr. Fix It. Xavier Palermo was recognized for his trustworthiness and willingness to assist others when asked. And he plans to attend trade school in Wyoming. So what a great example of someone who's, has a post-secondary plan and we wish him the best. And congratulations on his recognition. Recently, nine VUSD employees traveled out of state to compete water safety instructor training. Each year our coaches, especially those in water sports, we have swimming and all of those things, sometimes finding incredibly difficult to find water training, safety courses nearby. So as an investment in our coaches, we allow these team members to attend, including our Director and Coordinator of Athletics. And this event ensures that our coaches can receive instructor training in a timely, efficient and cost-effective manner. So apparently they had to spend over eight hours over the course of two days and I'm told the water was just a little bit chilly. So thank you for your sacrifice to make that possible and help keep our students safe. Also another spotlight, LD Monte, now this is a group that, that's just a stellar group. We see them in a lot of places, our LD Monte Ag teachers. They were awarded, the Agriculture Teachers Association awarded them the Tulare Kings Outstanding Three to Four Person Department. Ms. Martin was awarded the Kings, Tulare Kings Outstanding Young Teacher. Ms. Vituzan was awarded the Tulare Kings Mentor Teacher and also the Tulare Kings Teacher of Excellence and voted by the San Juan Keen Region to move on to the state level. So wishing her the best, and I think most of you know, this is just a phenomenal team here that we have at LD. So congratulations to all of them. Another major accomplishment, and you may have seen this in, in papers, in the newspaper, is in partnership with the Tulare County of Office of Education and the California Center on Teaching Careers, the USD was awarded part of an $8 million grant to increase and retain educators in the region. Shout out to our Human Resources Team for leading this effort. The grant will be distributed over the next three years with two main focus areas. Increase teacher retention and leadership pathways through professional learning and build a robust human capital management system to support teacher and staff professional learning. So we know how tight money can be sometimes, we're going to hear about that in a little bit. So receiving these grants and other things is a great way to ensure that we continue to advance our work. So thank you to Assistant Superintendent Ben Dillon Team and all the others that helped contribute to this. Very proud of this event. As members of our community and our board know, we're really on a mission to make sure obviously every student learning every day, but that all of our students know they have options available for them post-secondary. You just heard some examples, whether that's trade school, whether it's career, whatever it might be. And hopefully a four-year college. And so we're very proud of our partnerships. We talked about our Bulldog Bound Program, but recently we also have a partner with UC Merced for again, automatic admission into their program. It's called MAAP. Juniors from across our district applied to the program and last month, over 60 now senior students were admitted. They're already admitted to college. They have a four-year institution, a UC institution they can walk right into thanks to this program. It's very rigorous, they have to meet A3G requirements, uphold a 3.5 GPA through their senior year. But as long as they hit submit on their application, and we, we said, make sure you hit submit multiple times, they're guaranteed admission into UC Merced. We're so excited to see these students continue to grow academically and hopefully come back and contribute to our community. Also new launching our VUSD website, we've begun to work on an internal intranet, which is essentially an employee-facing portal. So our employees can go to one place, find forms, find information that they might need. And we look forward to launching this at the end of January. So stay tuned for more information about that. And then obviously it's a busy time of years. We have quite a few recognitions and observances that occur in November, December. School Psychology Awareness Week, Native American Heritage Month, of course, Thanksgiving, Veterans Day, National Special Education Day. So we appreciate all of our individuals that support these important observances. And then in social media, proud to continue our podcast. If you haven't had a chance to listen to that, highly encourage you to do that. And then of course, some other events that were highlighted in social media. And so that was a lot, but we have a lot to be proud of in Visalia Unified. And so Madam President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any board member comments? Definitely lots to be proud of, thank you. Item 11, general public comment. General public comment on any school-related topic may be heard at this time. The board asks that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. To comply with the Brown Act, California's Open Public Meeting Law, board discussion is limited to items on the agenda. Therefore, when receiving public comment for items not on the agenda, the board's role is limited to receiving such comments and the board may not engage in dialogue with the public. The board thanks the public for its participation in public comment and understanding of the board's responsibilities. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to no more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended that you begin your comments by stating your name. I do not have any green forms. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will move to consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item from the consent? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve.
Second? Second? Okay, on a motion by Kay Spear Salino and a second by Gamoyen, call for the vote.
Student board votes yes. Motion passes unanimously, seven to zero.
Student Board Representative reports, Ms. Kabill Salmaron from Mount Whitney High School.
Hello. I'm going to start off with LD Monte High School. The Monday returning back from Thanksgiving break, LD Monte hosted, and LD Monte ASB hosted a hot cocoa station for students. It was a great way to welcome back our minors on campus. The week returning from Thanksgiving break, LD Monte ASB hosted a full week of minors senate during homeroom. Each day during homeroom, different grade levels answered questions regarding schools policies so that administration could receive student feedback. LD Monte ASB is hosting cookie decorating and holiday bingo on the first day of finals week. LD Monte is hosting the annual USAV ASB Holiday Party on Monday 12th, on Monday, December 12th. This is a great opportunity to create a community among all Visalia ASBs. Next, Golden West High School. Golden West ASB is celebrating their holiday season by delivering our Adopt a Star gifts. Students will load up their cars and deliver them to each elementary school during the day of their final. Golden West Counseling Department started the week off strong by giving out hot cocoa and donuts to students as they entered campus to wish them good luck on their finals. Golden West ASB has also continued to fulfill small wishes for students with Starbucks drinks, Dutch Bros snacks, candies and even lunch. Golden West performed, Performing Arts Program also began the holiday season with a winter performance from Dance Drama Choir Band and Orchestra. Next, Mount Whitney High School. Mount Whitney ASB will be giving out hot chocolate and candy canes for free during the 10-minute break on finals week. Mount Whitney Choir just had their winter concert on December 6th where they sang holiday songs in a choral arrangement of the Polar Express. Mount Whitney's FFA Banking Place stirred in the LD Monte Banking Competition. Mount Whitney's band has their winter concert December 12th at the LD Monte Theater that starts at 7:00 PM. Redwood High School. Redwood CSF is supporting, no sponsoring, a toy drive for Visalia for Valley Children's Hospital Child Life Center. And donations will be accepted through December 15th. Monday morning, ASB handed out over 250 free hot chocolates to our student body with the hopes of starting finals off on the right foot. Redwood, Redwood's band held their free winter concert on Monday, the 11th in the LJ Williams Theater with performances by Jazz Band, Win Ensemble and Ranger Band. Our, oh, Redwood's competitive Mario Kart esports team as they defeated the LD Monte Minors in their semifinals playoffs game last Friday, December 8th. Sequoia High School. On Thursday, November 17th, our Culinary Arts prepared our annual Thanksgiving Fest feast for all Sequoia students to enjoy before Thanksgiving break. On Wednesday, November 16th, 45 students helped with our annual food distribution of 25 tons of food to needy families. Student volunteers were selected by Google Doc to ensure fairness. Asia's Kitchen will return to Sequoia before this Christmas break. Also, this past month, Joven Noble took a group of students to Santa Cruz for the Barrios Unidos field trip. VCIS Performing Arts Department put on an amazing fall showcase on December 1st at the LD Monte Theater where the vocal, acting, dance and rock band were all showcased. VCIS is procreating map testing to measure students' academics. Growth this semester for all students, the week of December 11th. VCIS ASB sponsored a variety of fun spirit dress-up days to boost student morale during finals week. VCIS early senior graduates have been participating in their graduate exit interviews in order to prepare them job interviews upon graduation. Last, VTech. VTech was excited to earn a third place for Most Spirited in the 77th Annual Candy Cane Lane Parade, which was a collaboration between multiple clubs at VTech. VTech's ASB has an amazing school culture rally featuring our guidelines for success, Fierce. And the ASB is creating a sense of belonging through their candy grams. VTech's FFA held their annual event of making blankets for pets last week. VTech is excited to announce that they will be strengthening their partnership with COS in applied technology and the trades at the COS campus through our new advanced manufacturing pathway through the K-12 Strong Workforce Grant of 500,000.
Thank you. That really is the best report and I think Superintendent Schrum wants to challenge him. And Mario Kart from his reaction over here just saying, all right, board member report. I'll start on that side, Dr. Vegas.
I'm also up for Mario Kart. But other than that, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of our staff, our teachers, our principals, administration, regardless of where you are in the district and every site. I'm just so grateful for all the work that you've done this year. I hope you're able to take some, you know, time off and rejuvenate, spend time with family, friends and loved ones and come back for another, you know, best first day ever in January. And so, thank you.
Dr. Odo.
So I'll follow in Dr. Vegas's lead and simply say thank you very much to all who do things with kids here in Visalia Unified to help, help each kid learn a little bit more every day and lead our children, our students to the futures they'd like to lead. Congratulations to our new board officers. You guys are well qualified and should have a great, great term. And I know we're in good hands there. And that is that, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Belt.
Thank you, President Gabey. The CSBA convention, which was my, was my second one, was a well worthwhile time, not only because we were given this award, but hiking the city streets with Mr. Schrum was quite adventurous. But we'll have to tell you about that later. We literally hiked city streets of San Francisco, finding our restaurant. But it gave us opportunity to actually, as we did in the previous event, grab small moments, as Dr. Vegas and I were talking about earlier, to get to know each other even better. Because quite often we're coming and going and we don't get a lot of personal time. That gave us that, even in the midst of the all-hands-on-deck, what to do with Denton in the very first evening. And part of our team had to come back home and we missed out getting some of that personal time. The Sunday, I attended the Dance Showcase, which was this all-high schools of Visalia, Lindsay, Tulare Union, Dance Studios from all over the county came together to show their best. And as, I loved all the students doing that, but I couldn't help but LJ Williams looks absolutely stunning. Thank you, Eric, and the whole team that have literally put the sparkle back into a real gem of Visalia as well as Visalia Unified. LJ Williams looks good, sounds good, smells good and will be an amazing opportunity for all kinds of events to continue to really utilize one of the best things about Visalia. Today, I actually was honored to be listening in with Vicky Leone and our CTE team. and our CTE team to the president of the American Welding Association, I think I said that right, who came from New York. He was in town in the area to address some students at COS this evening and actually the central section of American Welders Society. But he got the opportunity to light a fire under a lot of our high school students. They came from all four high schools, were in metal shop. Uh, metal shop teachers came as well, um, and lit them up that there is a need for CTE, for welders particularly, it was his focus, 90,000 a year for the next five years. And so as we were talking earlier, our students need all the tools, critical thinking, as well as hands-on opportunities of what a career could be. And he was honest, you may change careers. How many of us have done that? Uh, throughout your lifetime, but you get your feet wet. So, uh, I say kudos to Matt McGill and, uh, Chris Huff from COS who assisted having this event this morning. Like I said, it was an hour, but we don't know how far that investment will go. The last thing I'd like to address a little bit is, uh, I am encouraged at how much we're seeing with our student services, particularly in trying to help culture of our students, our campuses at every campus of Visalia Unified, and the work that Stephen Amundson is doing and all the team to actually invest in changing mindsets, because we keep talking about it. I had a teacher this week send me, uh, a glaring report that in his five classes, just through December 5th, he had 2,746 tardies. That's 2,746 interruptions in that class, those classes, every day for the last few months. Culture has to change, mindsets have to change. Somehow we need to encourage students to have a conscience. And so all the things that we're doing, connecting, helping to create for them a motivation to be there and to be there on time, uh, is what we're working at. And so, uh, I will be proposing some things we talked about in our study session yesterday. Check these things at the door of every class every day, and you pick it up at the end of class. Might be a good start.
Trustee Kay Spear Saleno.
Um, I made it to my first CSBA conference. And, um, it was wonderful. Um, I did just want to say, I really haven't had the opportunity to address my fellow board members. Um, I, I think that I, I told someone today that I kind of thought that award was gonna be a little cheesy, uh, when we first heard we were getting it, and then when we were there, it was a big deal. And the more I kept thinking about it, um, I think that we couldn't do it without all of you staff here. Uh, we really couldn't. You guys were a part of it. Um, but also I just want to say to you guys that, um, I think that we have tried really, really hard now for well over a year, um, to put what's most important to us, which we've always talked about, which is our students, um, making sure that they come first. And to just kind of tell you guys that I know it's not always easy. We have so many perspectives and, um, you know, politics and, and all these things, but we come here and, um, we really work together to make this like a trusting space, a safe space, a space for us to cultivate, um, making sure that we're doing what's best for kids. And so I didn't get a chance to say that to all of you, but I really was proud of us and I'm, I'm proud of you guys and happy to start with you. And hey, happy holidays and I hope you guys all enjoy your time off.
Board Member Gamoyen.
Um, I'd like to echo what, uh, Board Member Kay Spear Saleno said, um, there's no board without teachers and students and principals and our amazing district office staff. So thank you. Yeah, you guys, you guys make us proud. Um, I just want to share a little bit, I read these CSBA roundups every day and most of the time they frustrate me, but there was one that was really good about Oakland Unified. Um, they have a strong parent volunteer force that reads to kids. Um, and they also encourage parents to read to kids. So kids are constantly reading. And so I just want to encourage our community. Um, whether you have kids, little kids, big kids, no kids, grandparents, read the next three weeks. There's some amazing stuff out there to read. Um, and then I just want to again say thank you to staff. Rest up. You deserve it. And we'll see you back in January.
Thank you. Board Clerk Naylor.
So I don't have much left to, to talk about, but I, I do want to, um, kind of echo what trustee Kay Spear Saleno said. You know, it takes a, we all have such diverse personalities and it really takes a lot to remember that we're here for the kids, you know, we're, we're, the focus has to be our students and that they learn. And I appreciate that. And I, I thank all of you, um, and I, I really respect each and every one of you to work with. And thank you for supporting me in my new role as a, uh, board clerk. Um, I also want to welcome our new student board rep. You did an amazing job tonight and we look forward to that, like, uh, President Gamoyen said, um, I mean, President Gaby said, oh my gosh, I gotta remember this. Um, we look forward to your board report. So thank you for being a part of, of our, our board. Um, I also, you know, Golden West was here tonight and, um, Superintendent Schrum and I went to Pinkham to visit and also, um, I went to Mineral King. Just saw, at Mineral King, just saw a lot of, of classrooms and the phonics and the reading and the instruction for the teachers, just amazing. Um, if our kids don't learn, I don't know what else we can do, because I was just really impressed. Um, and I just, I, I say it a lot and I really mean it. I thank all our teachers, our staff, and everybody in Visalia Unified for all the support that you give to get our kids ready and be successful. It, it just, it shows. It really shows. And I just thank you. I can't thank you enough. Um, and it was nice at, in Pinkham, Golden West and Valley Oak was there, and I know Superintendent Schrum talked about it, but they were doing their festival and they were singing Christmas carols to the, um, the sixth, uh, fifth and sixth graders and trying, you know, showing them what they can do when they get into middle school and into high school. And it was just so, I didn't want to leave. You know, I know we had a visit classes, like, can we just stay a little longer? But they, they were impressive and, um, I just really appreciate that. And that's, that's it.
Thank you. And, uh, yeah, echo all of that, um, CSBA award. It, uh, it was a very cool deal, waiting backstage, seeing how big a deal it was, but it's definitely a VUSD award, not, um, just a board award. And with that, um, Candy Cane Lane Parade was so surprisingly fun riding in that bus. And to see all of those kids, when they would see the bus, they would go crazy cheering. And they're not cheering for us. They have no idea who we are, but they're cheering for Visalia Unified and they're cheering for their teachers and their principals and their vice principals and, and all of that, because that's who they think of, of, of Visalia Unified. And they were so excited. And the parents were cheering too. And yes, playing rock, paper, scissors, um, which was very cool. So that, um, just amazing. So thank you, staff, and definitely take a break, um, over this winter break. Last thing is CSBA, and maybe Superintendent Schrum can talk more about it too, is there was another award there also. I think it was the Golden Quill, actually, and it was for Mr. Pacina, um, for our communications. And I think, um, telling our story has been amazing and changing, um, perception of Visalia Unified and where we're going. So he was also recognized at CSBA and thank you for all your work. And with that, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Schrum.
Superintendent Schrum, can I say something super quick about Candy Cane Lane that I wanted to share that I forgot to, and that was that, um, both Jackie and I had our children on the bus. And what I love so much about it was that my daughter just turned two, so she wasn't quite two, and she was having a blast waving at people. But then so was Jackie's senior in high school. And so it was a super cool experience to just see the like age gap and then all of us too. Um, but I really appreciated that. It was fun for everyone.
Please do not tell my senior she was in a picture in the paper. We're like keeping that under wraps with the reindeer ears.
Well, it was a great event. I also echo, uh, again, we see our communications team and, and Andre and team, we're, we're nudging us to do that. And, uh, I was like, okay, well, let's see what the board says and, uh, but, but a great way to showcase and, and just show how proud we are. Yes, we have work to do. We've acknowledged that. We know that's why we're in, you know, engaging in a strategic plan, why we're engaging in a long-range facilities plan that we'll be sharing more about and involving the community with this spring. So while we recognize there's lots of work to do, we also have to take time to recognize and celebrate our students, our teachers, our parents, and all of those that come together to help make this such a special district. And that, that parade really, uh, did show that. And, uh, the students were sincerely cheering, VUSD, VUSD. And so that was really cool to see. And, and thank you to all of our principals and bands and others that marched and participated in that. Also, yes, again, congratulations, Andre Pacina did win one of the golden awards, uh, Golden Quill. And I think it's, it's pretty apparent why, uh, because of the great work of our communications team and, and also, but, but really to this board, uh, for allowing us to set this direction, for allowing this board to create our foundations. Um, that is really what enabled this to happen. You've provided us direction. You continue to provide us direction through the strategic plan as you set goals for, um, performance this year. And so really, um, very proud of this board and to work with each one of you and thank you for your leadership. And again, congratulations on that. And I too want to echo, uh, as we go into winter break, I know I myself am going to enjoy some travel time and spend time with family. Um, as educators, uh, many educators are not the best at taking time for themselves and taking time off and focusing on themselves. And so I am asking that all of our VUSD employees and educators take that time over the break. If we're not at our best ourselves, we can't be at our best for our kids. And that's so very important. So I also wish and hope everyone has a safe, joyous winter break, holiday season. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And we'll move on to administrative panel recommendations, uh, recommended expulsions. May I have a motion to approve the recommended expulsions?
Uh, motion? I'll motion.
I'll second.
On a motion by Kay Spear Saleno and a second by Dr. Odo, call for a vote.
Student board rep abstains and motion passes seven oh.
Item 16.2, Recommended Reinstatements. May I have a motion to approve the recommended reinstatements?
I'll motion.
Second. On a motion by Dr. Vegas and a second by trustee Gamoyen, I'll call for a vote.
Student board rep abstains. Vote passes seven zero.
17.1, 2023-24 VUSD First Interim Financial Report. Uh, I will call Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez and Budget Director Jessica Villarreal.
Good evening, President Gaby, and congratulations, uh, members of the board and Superintendent Schrum. Uh, tonight we are going to have a review of our first interim financial report. Uh, this is our report through October 31st um, of this current fiscal year. Uh, the, the first, and there we go. Um, uh, first going to start off with our, our foundation slide, and as we've talked about with the budget, um, this is how the board sets the financial resources to make sure that we adhere to the, to the board's beliefs and commitments. And as we develop that strategic plan, it will also be the, 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 the benchmark for, um, how we enact those goals and actions within that plan. So this is our agenda. We're going to talk a little bit about, uh, general fund. Um, I've got my festive tie on, says, um, that's about what's festive about me tonight. So, um, because we will share, uh, some news coming out of the state and what the, what the fiscal outlook is for next year. Um, don't kill messenger. Um, but, uh, in, in this case, we do have some good news around our budget, because as, as you all know, you all have set the, the conditions for us to establish a budget that's going to allow us to, to ensure that we, that we can move forward, uh, regardless of what happens, um, in the state budgeting process. So the purpose of the first interim report, um, as I shared, this is, uh, the changes that have occurred between our adopted budget and October 31st. So it's a point in time. Um, and it does look kind of a spoiler alert. It does say that we will have a positive certification that, which means that we meet our minimum 3% reserve as well as have a positive projection for the next two fiscal years. Um, and when we get to our multi-year projection, we'll share, you know, what we're, what we're, um, presenting in this report as well as what uh, could be with some, uh, projections from, uh, the Legislative Analyst Office for next fiscal year around the, uh, cost of living adjustments for, or COLA for next fiscal year. So we'll, uh, file this report with the county tomorrow, um, and then it will be filed with the state and we'll get a notice back from the county on whether they agree or disagree with our certification. They'll agree. Uh, so this is where we are in our budget timeline. We're in December, our first interim report. We will come back in January. We'll, we're, where we will present, um, the governor's January budget proposal, um, at that meeting, as well as we'll bring our, um, independent auditors to review the audit report for last fiscal year. Um, and then we begin our develop, budget development process. So jumping into our, our general fund, um, this column here on the left, this is our adopted budget. So that's where we were at June 30th. Column next to that is first interim. So as of October 31st, um, usually in our first interim report, we see the most significant changes within our, within our budget. And so we see variance in, uh, overall revenues and overall expenditures. And at budget adoption, we had a $4 million surplus at first interim. Of course, that's a, a large number there that's showing as a deficit. However, that deficit is a result of carrying over all of the one-time funds that we've received in the last couple of years, as well as our, um, ESR funds, of which we still have about 40 million or 35 million available. Um, but we carried over this year over 40 million. And so this list here on the left is just all of the different programs. Over half of that is, over half of the, the 104 million and, and changes in, uh, expenditures are one-time funds that we've carried over from prior fiscal years. And so carryover means that we had revenue received in a prior fiscal year, no revenue in the current year to offset expenditures, but we've carried those expenditures forward. Um, and so, um, I'll show on another slide that we do still have a balanced budget operationally in this current, current fiscal year. Uh, this is a breakdown of the revenues, um, our LCFF sources, which includes our supplemental concentration funds, which make up a portion, uh, largest portion of our, our LCAP, uh, federal funds, other state. Typically, we've about 80% of our funds come, comes from, uh, LCFF. But because we have those large one-time state and federal funds, it's a little bit, uh, different than what we would see in a normal, uh, budget year. And then on the expense side, um, you see our largest expense there, um, salaries and benefits with all of our employees, about 72%. Again, in a typical, a typical year, that's about 80 to 85%. Um, however, because of one-time funds, capital outlay projects that we're doing with those one-time funds that are in materials and supplies and other areas, um, that's down a little bit from a normal budget year. So, uh, moving to just the unrestricted portion of our budgets, we have restricted and unrestricted. The unrestricted is where, is our main operating, uh, budget. So we watch this very closely to make sure that we stay in balance. Um, this includes our, all of our LCFF funds and, um, um, and so we show here our adopted budget. And then in the next column is our first interim budget. Again, it shows a deficit on the unrestricted side, but we have about $18 million in carryover. And so this kind of shows it a little bit better that, um, when we look at that deficit and we pull out those one-time funds, our LCAP carryover, uh, and other projects, we have about a $5 million surplus operationally in our, in our current year budget on the unrestricted side. So there's a lot of numbers here. I'm not even going to try to go through any of them, but what this is, is all of our one-time funding sources. Um, and so you see our ESR one, two, three funds, and this line here shows what's remaining in those funding sources. Most of those have been expended at this point. We have remaining ESR three funds and then the Learning Recovery Block Grant Funds. And so the, uh, the ESR three funds expire at the end of this current year, actually in September, but we'll, we'll have them spent by the end of this year. Half of that is, is facility projects. The other half of that are stu- student supports and things that we put in place, uh, for learning recovery. The plan is that we would continue those services for the next two years with the Learning Recovery Block Grant Funds. We haven't spent any of those funds. Um, um, we are looking at all, you know, vacancies that occur in these one-time funding sources to ensure that as we move forward, that we're going to continue uh, providing those services and, and, and filling those positions. You know, one thing I will share is the Learning Recovery Block Grant, um, did have a small reduction this year as the state tried to balance its budget. Um, so when we look at, at potential, um, balancing actions for the state for next year, that could be another source. Um, and we're continuing to plan for how we spend these funds. In our multi-year projection, so, um, the multi-year projection, uh, that we're submitting to the county is based off of the, the latest information that we have from the Department of Finance, which projects, uh, about a close to 4% cost of living adjustment for next year. And so as we move that forward, if you just look at the revenue for LCFF and you did the math on 4%, it should be about 394 million. But this shows 387, because, um, during the pandemic, we were given a hold harmless period for three years, uh, or a three-year averaging of our average daily attendance. And so we know through COVID, our attendance dropped, and so we're And so we're coming out of those hold harmless periods where we will now begin being funded based on our actual ADA. And so even though this number should be larger, it's actually representative of about a 1.8% COLA. So, so that reduction in ADA is now kind of filtering all the way through our budget. The hold harmless periods are over, and so the COLA is, is less than what an actual COLA should be. In this, in these assumptions, we still have a balanced budget and a small surplus moving forward. We do also want to show that the Legislative Analyst Office has projected a 1.27% COLA for next year. So we want to show what that would look like in our, in our unrestricted budget. And so that same, that same applies for the hold harmless. And so 379 million, even though we're getting a COLA of 1.2, still results in less on a cash basis. And so you can see as a, as a deficit in the next two years, and in our, you know, total budget, that's not something that we can't overcome, and we'd bring back recommendations for a balanced budget through next year's budget development process. I can tell you, these numbers are absolutely wrong, but they're approximately correct based on the information that we have today. It is a point in time. So looking forward, as I mentioned, we'll be back in January with the governor's initial proposal. I shared the Legislative Analyst Office is projecting a 1.27% COLA. With the delay in tax receipts, now they, they are projecting a current year shortfall in revenues of about $26 billion, billion with a B, and in the budget year, about a $68 billion shortfall. So the state has some work to do to rebalance their budget. They have tools. They have reserves that they put in place. As I mentioned, that hold harmless kind of reduces the state's obligation to pay towards, for, for LCFF. And so, you know, there are ways that the state, actions that state can take to balance the budget. We still are looking at, we did actually get some good news yesterday with our birth rates and Visalia grew last year compared to prior, prior years. And so we'll see some, yay, yay, yay for ADA. So we will, and so in those projections, we did see our enrollment averaging out and, and pretty much trending flat over the next five or six years. And so we won't see that decline in enrollment like we're seeing across the state in, in school districts. I mentioned the hold harmless provision goes away. We're, we have a plan for the expiring one-time funds, but we'll have to look to the state next year to see what actions we might need to take to keep our budget in balance for next year. I didn't want to end on a total bad note, but then I think about this, and this was a couple of weeks ago, so it might not, not, might not apply. But there are still some chances that the state can, can balance next year's budget without making cuts to education. Again, use of reserves, that's what they're for. Not putting money into the reserve as they planned, and so there's, there's ways they can do this without cutting, touch to education, but the rest of the state budget will likely, as it says here, face a deficit. So that better bad news, I guess. And this is an action item, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Is there any board comment? All right. May I have a motion to approve the first interim financial report?
I will motion.
Second.
On a motion by Case Spear Saleno and a second by Odo.
Student board rep votes yes. Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
Thank you.
17.2, Visalia Unified Teachers Association interest, initial proposal for certificated negotiations, first read. I will have Assistant Superintendent Ben Dillon.
Good evening, board president, members of the board, members of our distinguished school district. It is my privilege right now to introduce my partner over here, Mr. Greg Price, VUTA president, who will share VUTAs sunshine interest with you before I go here.
Good evening. I'm Greg Price, president of Visalia Unified Teachers Association. I am happy to report that this will be the shortest report of the evening. For all the audience, I hope you're going to give the board a round of applause, because this is going to be the shortest board meeting I remember in a long time. Yes. So our 2024-25 VUTA sunshine proposals. This year, VUTA will open the following article, Article 3, Safety Conditions of Employment. The articles we will mutually open with VUSD are Article 1, Contract Provisions, Article 5, Hours of Employment, Article 6, Transfers and Reassignments, Article 8, Class Size, Article 10, Salaries, Article 12, Employment Benefits, and Article 20, Special Education. This year, VUTA will be addressing issues associated with counselors, middle school, and alternative education sites. Additionally, we are interested in the working conditions for all teachers in VUSD. Additionally, we will expect to open articles mutually as the need arises throughout the bargaining process. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Board member comment? All right, this is not an action item. It's the first read. Mr. Next one, 17.3, Visalia Unified School District interest, initial proposal for certificated negotiations, Assistant Superintendent of HRD, Ben Dillon.
Thank you very much, President Gabi. So I will take Mr. Price's challenge and try to be the shortest report of the evening as well. So not to belabor the point, but we, as a district, are excited as we come into negotiations, negotiations with VUTA with the intent to negotiate a mutually agreeable contract through our interest-based bargaining in order to address common interests and concerns in alignment with our district foundations. And our district interests do include our district foundations, specifically our board's beliefs and commitments, as well as maintaining district reserves to preserve instructional programming for all students during various economic cycles, and engaging in an open, open and honest exchange of information through collaborative and objective interest-based bargaining with VUTA. I will not reiterate the articles we intend to open as they are all reflected in what Mr. Price shared. And we look forward to good faith negotiations with VUTA as we go forward in this school year on behalf of our students and our staff.
Thank you. And is there any public comment? Any board comment? This is not an action item. This is the first read. Thank you. 17.4, Resolution, Classified School Employee Summer Assistant Program. Assistant Superintendent of HRD, Ben Dillon.
Thank you. So this is a, an item we do bring forward. We would ask that the board move forward to approve this recommendation and resolution. What the California School Employee Summer Assistant Program allows is that for our classified employees who work less than 12 months, it allows them to defer a portion of their salary to then receive payment over the course of the summer in which CD provides matching funds. So it's a unique opportunity for our classified employees, who otherwise at times have to find alternate employment during the course of that time. So our request would be to the board approve this opportunity on behalf of those employees.
Thank you. Is there any public comment? Any board comment? This is an action item, so may I have a motion to adopt the resolution approving VUSD's participation in the Classified Employee Summer Assistance Program?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
A motion by Odo and a second by Case Spear Saleno.
Student board rep votes yes. Motion passes unanimously 7-0.
17.5, The Warrant List for October 28th, 2023 to November 16th, 2023. Chief Business Officer Nathan Hernandez.
Good evening. This is our routine action to approve the warrants through, from October 28th through November 16th.
Is there any public comment? Any board comment? May I have a motion to approve the warrant list?
So moved.
I'll second.
On a motion by Gomoyen, a second by Case Spear Saleno.
Board member, I mean, student board rep votes yes. Motion passes with six yay and one abstention.
All right, the meeting is now adjourned.